Hello, I'm Heather Carroll, the Executive Director of the Skinny Atlas Education Foundation. Thank you for joining us for this virtual Meet the Candidates forum brought to you by the PTC and SEF. Your vote is so important. First, a few housekeeping items. In order to be valid, your paper ballot must comply in the following ways. First, it must be received by the district office no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 9th. If you feel that your ballot may not be received in time via the US Postal Service, you may walk it in. A secure ballot box will be available in the lobby of our district office on Monday, June 8th, and on Tuesday, June 9th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM each day. Social distancing guidelines and the wearing of face coverings will be required per state regulations. Two, please carefully read the instructions on your ballot and the inner envelope. Fill in the oval to the right of the candidate's name. Do not overvote. Voting for more than two candidates will void that section of your ballot. If you make a mistake on your ballot, do not attempt to correct the mistake with erasures or crossouts. Bring your original ballot to the district office to request a replacement. Be sure to complete both sides of the ballot. The inner envelope of your ballot must fully be completed on the front, and the back requires your signature in two places. This is very important. Sign and date on the bottom as indicated. Then after you have sealed the envelope, sign across the envelope closure. Fail to sign in both places will invalidate your ballot. Thank you for your attention to these details, and thank you for your time you are taking to make an informed decision for the future of our school district. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our first candidate, Michelle Etterer. Michelle resides in Skinny Atlas and has lived in the district for six years. She and her husband John have two children, both enrolled at State Street Intermediate School. She is president of the Skinny Atlas Elementary Parent Teacher Committee and has served on that board for the past four years in various roles. Michelle graduated from South Jefferson Central School in Adams, New York. She received a Bachelor of Arts in Anthropology and a Master of Science in Pathology from the State University of New York at Buffalo Roswell Park Cancer Institute. Michelle completed her Physician Associate Degree from Yale University School of Medicine. She most recently earned her Doctor of Medical Science degree from the University of Lynchburg. Michelle has practiced family medicine, school-based health, emergency medicine, urgent care, child and adolescent psychiatry, and pediatrics. She is board certified by the National Commission on Certification for PAs in Pediatrics. Currently, Michelle practices as a PA at well-known urgent care in Fairmount, New York. She is a past president for the New York State Society of Physician Assistance and served as governmental affairs chair, secretary, and president-elect. She has chaired numerous committees and is an active member of the scholarship committee. Etterer is a former House of Delegates representative for the American Academy of Physician Assistance. As the academic coordinator for the LeMoyne College PA Program, Michelle led the program's transition to a web-based learning platform. She has developed and provided instruction for graduate-level courses in anatomy and physiology and clinical medicine at LeMoyne College. Michelle also taught physical examination skills at both Upstate Medical School and LeMoyne College. She has lectured at state and national medical conferences. Currently, she is a mentor for the well-known fellowship program for nurse practitioners and PAs. A lifelong educator, Michelle is dedicated to teaching students and providing public education to children, parents, and colleagues.
I would like to thank the Skinny Atlas Education Foundation and the Skinny Atlas High School Parent Teacher Committee for hosting this forum and providing the opportunity to share my thoughts on the board's primary roles and responsibilities. One of the board's primary roles is to establish a clear focus and a strategic framework of core beliefs, effective practices, and goals for student education. School boards provide a living framework collectively adopted and developed by the community over some time and continuously monitored and revised by an active school board. In highly supportive districts such as Skinny Atlas, the school board continuously focuses on improving student achievement, working to create cultures of success uniquely suited to the students' needs and the faculty's strengths. The school board is responsible for providing instructional coherence and support. District leaders focus on instruction and model that priority by publicly focusing on curriculum and instruction in school board meetings. They routinely engage school leaders and teachers in developing and using tools and proven research-based instructional practices. The school board is responsible for investing heavily in instruction-related professional learning for district staff, providing the tools to be effective educators and continuous learners. The district provides new faculty with induction and mentoring to increase their chances of success. School boards assist schools in using data that link student achievement and classroom practices effectively. The board's role is to adopt strategies to help principals disaggregate, analyze, and interpret student achievement data quickly to discern student deficits and identify weaknesses in school and classroom practices. They help schools use formative and benchmark assessments to achieve academic goals. School boards optimize the use of resources to improve student learning. Our primary role is to provide principals with resources and the flexibility to use those resources to address unique school needs while remaining consistent with school and district improvement frameworks and strategic plans. An active school board uses open, credible processes to involve key school and community leaders in shaping a vision for improvement. District leaders engage the whole community in setting a shared vision for student learning. They seek principals and teachers' ideas on major decisions about district policies, changes in curriculum, and instructional improvements, use of professional development resources, and the district's budget. They encourage principals to use leadership teams to lead their schools and to engage the school community in setting a vision and creating an instructional plan. These key strategies begin with the district setting a direction by articulating a vision for schools, specific goals consistent with that vision, and a framework of best practices that instructional leaders can use to achieve that vision and meet key objectives. A comprehensive strategic plan provides principals and staff with direction and support to shape and implement an educational program based on the unique context of their school and the academic, social, and emotional needs of their students. Supportive districts and their leaders know that without a thoughtful vision, effective principal leadership, and teacher cooperation, little progress will be made to improve student outcomes. As a parent and a physician assistant, I am concerned regarding the reopening of our schools this fall. Until we have a vaccine, there are many steps to safely reopen schools in person. We must continue social distancing. Everything we do to comply with social distancing really amounts to making schools less efficient. The CDC recommends requiring masks for staff members and encouraging them for children. It suggests no-touch trash cans, cleaning school surfaces, buses, and playground equipment daily, allowing fewer children on buses, and checking student and staff temperatures daily. It will cost more because we need to invest in protective equipment. It will cost more because schools need to not just be cleaned but sanitized. This all means smaller class sizes, which can only happen with more teachers. It means more bus runs, which could only happen with more bus drivers and buses. It means more cleaning, which can only happen with more custodians and cleaning supplies. The mental health crisis in our communities will come to the schools when we reopen. We need more nurses, counselors, and psychologists to help the physical and mental health concerns of our students. The budget cuts to public education will stand in the way of preparing our schools for the safe return of students and educators, and it's going to prolong the economic recovery from this pandemic. Joining statewide associations to advocate for education, urging state legislators to reject proposed budget cuts to education, and to prioritize funding for schools is necessary. It will cost more, not less, to reopen our schools for in-person classes due to the increased costs for sanitation, personal protective equipment, more staff, and efforts to recover lost learning. Given the costs associated with safely reopening, the district might be forced to conduct school remotely as a cost-savings move. We cannot in good conscience risk the health and safety of our students and staff by returning to the classroom prematurely and without funding for the necessary precautions given the continued lack of a national testing program and a lack of clear understanding of the impacts of coronavirus on young people.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you our second candidate, Daniel Evans. Having grown up in Skinny Atlas and now being a parent raising a family in the community, Dan Evans is aware of the needs of the Skinny Atlas Central School District. Dan is a 1990 SCS graduate who holds a Bachelor's Degree in Health Sciences, a Master's Degree in Education, and a Certificate of Advanced Study in School Administration from the State University of New York at Cortland. In the New York and Massachusetts school systems, Dan has obtained over 23 years of professional experience in the positions of school administrator, teacher, and coach. Dan has been employed by the Syracuse City School District for 21 years, and for the past 15 years has been a vice principal with assignments at the pre-K, eighth grade, and high school levels. With his extensive public school educational experience, Dan has developed valuable insight in budget development, school building management, implementation of curriculum, knowledge of public school education regulations, assessment of school safety plans, management of several multimillion-dollar school construction projects, and supervision of remote learning instruction resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. In 2000, Dan returned to Skinny Atlas and purchased a home in the village. Dan resides with his wife Liz, class of 1990, and two daughters. Emily is a ninth grader, and Madison is a sixth grader. Dan was appointed to the Skinny Atlas Board of Education on September 10, 2019, and is a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. Dan was previously employed by the Skinny Atlas School District as an assistant coach for the Boys Varsity Ice Hockey Team, head coach of the Boys JV Soccer Team, and head coach of the Boys Modified Lacrosse Team. Prior to obtaining a permanent teaching position, Dan was a substitute teacher within the district for two years. Dan has been a volunteer firefighter for the Skinny Atlas Fire Department since 1989 and held the community leadership role as a Skinny Atlas Fire Chief for 12 years. As a Skinny Atlas volunteer firefighter, Dan has helped numerous Skinny Atlas families, residents, and businesses during critical life moments. As the fire chief, Dan did meet with former superintendent Ken Slentz and other district personnel to initiate, design, and implement school-based emergency response plans for all district buildings. Dan has been a volunteer coach for the Skinny Atlas Youth Hockey Association, Skinny Atlas Youth Soccer Organization, and Skinny Atlas Lakeshore Baseball and Softball. Dan is a current board member for the Skinny Atlas Youth Hockey Association and Skinny Atlas High School Girls Ice Hockey Boosters.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Skinny Atlas PTC for organizing the virtual Meet the Candidate night. Over the next few minutes, I will introduce myself to the community and discuss my strong qualifications to remain a board member on the Skinny Atlas Board of Education. I am running for the Skinny Atlas Board of Education so that I can continue to serve my community as a school board member, to advocate for all children within the district, and to support the Skinny Atlas Central School District strategic plan. I was appointed to the Skinny Atlas Board of Education on September 10, 2019, and as a board member, I have attended every regularly scheduled board meeting and have been involved with the Strategic Planning Committee. To provide the best service to my community, I have balanced my professional work schedule with my responsibilities as a Board of Education member with the support of my wife and daughters and doing my strong time management and organizational skills. Within the extensive history of volunteerism and involvement in the community, I have developed strong connections with district families and residents, so I am aware of the issues and opportunities within the district. Being so invested in the community, in combination with my strong public education background, I am able to make well-thought-out, educated, and impactful decisions as a representative for the entire community. As a professional leader in the field of education, I am aware of the function of a school board member is to set direction, to provide support, ensure accountability, and to, most importantly, advocate for all children within the district. As a school board member, I have demonstrated responsiveness to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the Skinny Atlas community. While on the Board of Education, I fulfill these responsibilities by working together as a team with the other sitting board members and with interim superintendent to make decisions that would best serve district students, school personnel, and the community members. When called upon to make challenging decisions as a board member, I gather all relevant information, analyze the information provided, assess the impact of the decisions on the children, the district, and community, strategize other viable alternatives, and openly communicate with all involved stakeholders before making an educated, thoughtful decision. Through the hard work and tireless dedication to their jobs, the educational professionals and support staff throughout the Skinny Atlas Central School District have collectively contributed to the achievement of the Blue Ribbon School designation. From my professional experience being a teacher within the public school systems, I am very aware of the critical impact that teachers have on so many students. In today's world, teachers must not only educate students but must wear many hats due to complex socioeconomic issues and due to the overall change in the family unit dynamic. To continue the outstanding educational programming and opportunities for every child within the district, school personnel must be supported by school administration, and teachers must have the access to all needed resources and technology. To guide the development and to provide direction for educational program within the Skinny Atlas Central School District, the strategic plan must be supported. As an entrusted public official who volunteers within the public school setting, I am always accessible by email and phone, and I always have time to talk when I connect with individuals while out in the community. As a 1990 SCS graduate, as a public school employee, as a parent, as a longstanding Skales community member, and as a first responder volunteering in the community, a strong community is built from a strong public school system. As we're working together, the Skinny Atlas School District is stronger.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you our third candidate, Gary Gerst. Gary was born and raised in Skinny Atlas and has deep ties within the community. A graduate from SCS in the class of 1990, he and his wife Linda now have three children, a junior, a freshman, and a sixth grader enrolled in the district. After earning his Certificate of Advanced Study, Gary was an elementary curriculum coordinator, the principal at Waterman, the principal at the middle school, and the director of learning at SCS. Gary is currently the principal at Manoa Elementary in the East Syracuse-Manoa School District at the K-5 level. Gary was also a founding member of the Skinny Atlas Education Foundation and coached soccer and lacrosse in the district for many years.
Hi, my name is Gary Gerst. First of all, I want to thank the Skinny Atlas Education Foundation and the PTC for setting up this virtual platform so that the community can get to know all of the Board of Education candidates. What has motivated me to run for the board this year is that I do want to give back to a school that has given so much to me. I was born and raised in Skinny Atlas, graduated in 1990, and you know, I had so many incredible educators, teachers, administrators that really did, I think, helped me see that the profession that I wanted to go into was education. And I think that the thing about that is, is that I've been blessed because there's very, very few days that I don't love going to work. So again, giving back. Also, I have three kids. I have Nathan, Thomas, and Addison that are part of Skinny Atlas Central Schools. And my lovely wife Linda, we're so proud of everything that they've done, and they are receiving an incredible education. I also think my experience is, as an educator, I've worked in the district as a teacher and an administrator for almost 16 years. I've worked at West Genesee Central Schools as a principal, and currently I'm a principal at East Syracuse-Manoa, Manoa Elementary. I think all of those experiences would help me as a board member.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you our fourth candidate, Valerie Jerabeck. Val has lived in Skinny Atlas with her husband Bob for 30-plus years. She is very proud of her two children who attended K-12 here and went on to graduate from Clarkson University, and a grandson who will soon be a Laker. In the past 30 years, Val has been very involved in the schools and community: school board member, PTCs, Skinny Atlas Education Foundation Board, Music Boosters, Waterman Blue Ribbon Committee, School Building Team, a past member and board of the Rotary Club, and multiple Clarkson University committees and organizations. With a BS in Electrical Engineering from Clarkson University, Val went on to become the first woman to attend and graduate from the Knowles Atomic Power Laboratory Nuclear Power Engineering School. She continued in a career that included various positions: design engineer, field engineer, project planning engineer, and supervisor of technical training for the southern half of the United States, to name a few. She is currently retired, which allows for plenty of time to devote to the school board.
Hello, and thank you to the PTC and the Skinny Atlas Education Foundation for allowing this opportunity to speak to you. As a past member of the board, I know firsthand what it takes to be a contributing, effective member. The success of this school board has always depended on the hard work and dedication of a lot of people, but we've been faced with some challenges lately: COVID-19 pandemic, developing remote teaching and learning plans with little notice, shrinking enrollments, higher costs, lower state aid, and a tax base that's been stretched nearly to its limit. The school board is in place to steer the ship, to keep it on an even keel, if you will, and is responsible to all stakeholders. Skinny Atlas has always provided a high quality of education, and I want to see that continue and improve. I've always been proud of the school system here: the students, the teachers, the support staff, the administrators, and the community involvement here in Skinny Atlas, and would like to remain involved in the high level of education provided here. Education is, and always has been, about the children. Sam Perkins wrote, "At 211 degrees, water's hot. At 212 degrees, it boils, and with boiling water comes steam, and steam can power a locomotive or a nuclear reactor." I think I can affect that one degree of change in the school district. It will make a difference. I will work with the board members, administrators, support staff, parents, and the community to uphold the high quality of education here while being fiscally responsible. I think it's important to take a step back from any issue and take a level-headed, balanced look at all points of view. It's often necessary to simply roll up your sleeves and get to work. I'm someone who knows gender, a straight shooter, who will examine an issue from all points of view, who deals in facts, and is capable of thinking outside the box when dealing with a dilemma. I've always rolled up my sleeves and gotten to work, and I will continue to do so for the Skinny Atlas school system. I have the experience and dedication necessary to make a positive contribution. In short, I would be honored to serve on the Skinny Atlas School Board. Thank you very much.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you our fifth candidate, Ezra Wegbright. Ezra is an educator and a parent of three children in the district. His older daughter is finishing fourth grade, and his twins are finishing kindergarten. Ezra is a psychology professor at Casanova College and has lived in Skinny Atlas since moving to the area five years ago. He has also been an assistant and head coach for the Skinny Atlas Youth Soccer Organization. Originally from a small town in rural southwestern Virginia, he went to public schools and attended Virginia Tech, where he obtained Bachelor's Degrees in Psychology and Philosophy, magna cum laude. Ezra then completed a PhD in Experimental Psychology at Northwestern University. Before moving to New York, Ezra conducted postdoctoral research fellowships studying children and adults with mood and attention disorders at the University of Illinois Chicago, Harvard Medical School, and Brown University Medical School. He is excited to be running for school board as a way to contribute to the academic success and personal growth of all Skinny Atlas students, faculty, and staff.
Hi, my name is Ezra Wegbright, and I'm excited to be running for the Skinny Atlas School Board this year. Although I really wanted to meet and talk with you all in person, I recognize that under the current situation, that simply isn't possible. I want to thank the Education Foundation and the PTC for collaborating to make this virtual forum happen. To give you some background about me, I'm an educator, a community member, and most importantly, a father of three amazing kids in the district. I care deeply about the academic success, personal growth, and overall well-being of all students, families, teachers, and staff in the district. I decided to run this year because I truly appreciate what the district has to offer, but I also know we can provide so much more. I believe that my experience and educational background will enable me to work with our administration, other board members, and the community to do this. I've taught psychology, statistics, and other related courses at Casanova College for the past five years. I've also served on many Casanova College committees, including seven faculty hiring committees, our curriculum review committee, and an online learning task force. I currently serve as our chair of our institutional review board, and I'm a member of our Strategic Planning Council and our campus reopening task force. I'm honored to be able to serve the CAS college community this way, and I hope to do the same in Skinny Atlas. I'm so excited and ready to take on the time commitments involved in a school board position. From my extensive committee work, I'm also quite aware that school boards require members to work together to solve problems. So I'll be doing a lot of listening and learning in addition to contributing my own perspective and suggestions. I believe in working hard and checking one's ego out the door because the stakes are literally our children's future and the future of our community. I see the school district as the heart of the community and the school board's primary mission as guiding the way the community wishes to educate its future citizens. I also want to take this opportunity to personally thank all of our dedicated teachers and staff for their hard work over the past few months. With very little notice, they had to redesign their courses, learn new technology and teaching methods, and effectively teach and engage students from a distance. Having five-year-old twins, I've always been impressed with elementary teachers who have 20 five-to-seven-year-olds in a classroom all day long. I recognize educating these students from a distance is a truly remarkable feat. I also had to move my classes to a virtual learning format, and I recognize tremendous efforts and challenges in making that transition successfully. I am very proud of how our district as a whole rose to this unique challenge. Overall, I believe the strengths of the Skinny Atlas school system are its dedicated teachers and staff, as well as the wonderful supportive community. I believe we can capitalize on this and provide greater opportunities to our students even though we are a small community. By working with BOSIs, for example, to expand our distance learning programs, we can provide greater course options to students without incurring costs associated with a traditional teaching format. I realize that a single board member cannot act alone, but as a board member, I want to be responsive to the voice of the community and would always be welcome to hear ideas or concerns that can be brought to the board as a whole. I believe that the board and administration can improve on communicating with our constituents to provide greater transparency. As a board member, I would advocate strongly for this. I would be honored and humbled to receive your vote, but regardless of whether you vote for me, first and foremost, I encourage all of you to vote. Thank you.
We have asked each of the candidates to answer five pre-selected questions. Question number one, priorities. What are your priorities for the district in the coming year? Why and how did you select these issues?
One of the school district's top priorities should be student health and safety. My husband and I share your fears about sending our children back to school amidst the COVID-19 pandemic. We have two boys enrolled at State Street Intermediate School. I will help form an effective plan to keep students safe when the classrooms reopen. Our administrators will need guidance to make difficult decisions about policy and procedures to adopt to ensure our children remain safe. My knowledge of global health disaster medicine and healthcare administration will allow me to present up-to-date guidelines for the board's consideration. The second priority should be supporting emotional wellness. My practice has included family medicine, school-based health, pediatrics, adolescent psychiatry, and emergency medicine. In the education equation, mental health and wellness cannot be left behind. I commend the focus the district has maintained on health and wellness. Stresses related to today's environment underscore the critical nature of this initiative. I was fortunate to explore the topic of youth anxiety and wellness for my doctoral thesis. I never realized it would be such a timely and significant subject until now. The third priority should be support for curriculum development and distance learning program improvements with instructional technology. As academic coordinator at LeMoyne College, I successfully led my collegiate program's transition to a web-based learning platform. Together, we can build a stronger, more accessible online presence to educate our children.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and executive order to close schools, school districts throughout the state of New York must try to envision a new normal for the delivery of educational instruction within the public school setting. Due to the unprecedented events that unfolded from the COVID-19 pandemic health crisis, I feel that the Skinny Atlas Central School District must reassess the district priorities to adapt to the fluid changes impacting the public school system. Priority number one, support of educational programming and school personnel. To provide outstanding educational program for every student, the Skinny Atlas Central School District strategic plan must be supported. To achieve academic excellence and to have the ability to provide a variety of opportunities for all district students, school personnel must be supported and have access to needed resources and technology for both traditional and remote learning instruction. Priority number two, school safety. When the executive order allows school districts to reopen their buildings for instruction, schools need to assess, design, and implement a new school environment to ensure the safety and emotional wellness for all students, staff, parents, and community members. Guidance from the Governor of New York, the New York State Department of Education, Board of Regents, and the Department of Health should be utilized by the Skinny Atlas Central School District to establish district's policy and procedures on health and wellness related to the COVID-19 pandemic and school environment design. Priority number three, fiscal responsibility. At this time, there are numerous unknowns related to the distribution of state and federal funding to New York schools and districts. Schools must evaluate the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on educational budgets and assess how to provide quality educational programming for every student while maintaining fiscal prudence.
The district priorities for next year, the way that I've looked at this, is that we always have to focus on on really the students and the faculty, making sure, especially, you know, moving through the summer and looking at it as a board, is how we're supporting the faculty to prepare for possibly another an extended period of time where we're doing distance learning and making sure that we're able to make the connections with the students for their social, emotional well-being, and making sure that we are having the ability for teachers and people to meet with those students live so that within their instruction, because that absolutely helps, not just academically, I think it helps the most with them socially, emotionally, so a solid plan there. We're also going to need to support our new superintendent. That'll be critical. We want to set him up for success. And the final thing is, is the budget, which will be a major priority given the COVID pandemic and the restrictions that are going to be put on our budget because of state aid.
Volunteerism has always been important to me. It embodies community spirit and a sense of belonging to something larger. I will continue to encourage the high level of involvement and support we've always had and involve the students on all levels to a higher degree. The faculty and staff rose to the challenge of remote learning with little or no prep time. In the next year, we need to develop remote, less learning plans that can be implemented should this happen again. Funding and inadequate state aid has been and continues to be an ongoing problem. The district has always been forward-thinking when preparing budgets and has done the best with the available resources. With so many unknowns ahead of us, it's difficult to plan, but this vigilance needs to continue to keep our district one of the best in central New York and continue to make it improve. We need to provide the same high level of education while working within the budget. The school district must weigh all components and points of view before adding or deleting programs.
My priorities for the district in the coming year are to, number one, increase educational programming and improve students' academic achievement. Number two, maintain fiscal responsibility. And number three, improve communication and increase transparency. I pick these priorities based on what I personally would like to see as a parent and based on my discussions with other community members. I believe Skinny Atlas schools stand out in both the breadth and depth of the programming they can provide. I will look for efficiencies in this system and ways in which we can better leverage our existing resources in addition to pursuing new opportunities. I believe in thoughtful, wise financial decision-making based on data and evidence of effectiveness rather than based on opinion or rhetoric. I believe we need to improve the way we communicate with the stakeholders in our community. I personally was disappointed that the hiring of our new superintendent was communicated to the media before it was sent out to the community. So many of us in this community are personally invested in the district, and our district should be empowering families and students with important information as well as sharing the hard work and growth that our students and teachers produce each and every day so that community members understand the value created by their crucial investment in public education.
Question number two, budget. The New York State budget allows Governor Cuomo to reduce state funding for school districts at three points in the coming year, if necessary, due to low tax revenues resulting from the pandemic. How do you intend to balance the needs of our taxpayers with the need for providing quality curriculum, instruction, and programming for our schoolchildren?
Fluid and dynamic oversight of the school budget and allocated resources will be imperative over the next several years. The devastating impact of COVID-19 has left our district with an unusually difficult and speculative task as they prepare financial plans for the upcoming school year. First, our district is dealing with the unanswered question of whether and how we will be allowed to open schools this fall and what that may mean for our workforce and technology needs. Second, the pandemic's impact on state tax collections means lawmakers may need to consider a potential freeze or cut in school aid. State budget cuts of up to 20% are projected. Given the severity of the current downturn, such an outcome looks increasingly possible in the absence of federal aid to offset the hit to state revenues. The key element is to continue to provide quality curriculum, instruction, and programs for our children despite reduced funding. We need community and district leaders to reimagine how technology can be used to revolutionize an education system that is still modeled on the traditional teacher-student dynamic in a physical classroom. Revolutionizing education for our students needs to happen now. We need to focus our efforts on choosing a synchronous online learning platform. Distance learning requires new equipment and brings its own logistical challenges. We need to invest in instructional technology and training for students, teachers, and parents to provide a cohesive educational experience for students at each grade level.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic health crisis and the national economic fallout, there's a prediction of decreased state funding for school districts. April 1st through April 30th, May 1st through June 30th, and July 1st through December 31st are time periods when Governor Cuomo will assess the actual state operating revenue, which will determine if additional reduction in state aid is warranted to public school districts. In the time period from April 1st to the 30th, Governor Cuomo did not release any information regarding state aid to New York schools. Governor Cuomo has repeatedly stated the school districts could face a reduction of 20% in state aid. This significant financial reduction in monetary funds could present devastating consequences to the Skinny Atlas Central School District. Due to the numerous unknowns related to the distribution of state funding, the district must operate in the now and use concrete school district data. The district must assess the current operating budget and assess cost-saving alternatives that would not jeopardize the quality education programming that Skinny Atlas has been known for, but also consider the taxpayer. When assessing cost-saving alternatives, all aspects of the school budget should be considered and evaluated. With these unprecedented times and with so many unknowns for the future, it is inevitable that the difficult final decisions will have to be made. With open communication, a thoughtful decision-making process, and an analysis of the decision's impact on all stakeholders, the district and the community will navigate these uncharted waters together.
The budget. Our board this year was faced with an incredible challenge given the COVID-19 pandemic and what we were facing in terms of the state aid cuts that we had. Next year, we're gonna, we will, we do know that the budget is likely not going to improve. It in fact could be worse. So our new superintendent, Mr. Knuth, will bring fresh eyes, which is an advantage in having a new superintendent come in and be able to look at the entirety of the budget to see if there's any areas that have not been thought of, that there are potential savings. The community needs to know precisely how their tax dollars are being spent to support the district because this year, the board took a lot of time and listened to a lot of feedback and did increase the tax levy. And if that happens again next year too, we just want to make sure the community knows that their hard-earned tax dollars are really being used to support the district. And then the Board of Education along with Mr. Knuth will need to spend a great deal of time reviewing all areas of the budget to make sure we can make the best possible decision.
If state funding is cut by 20%, we will probably unfortunately see some program cuts. I think if this happens, it's important to keep the core programs intact. It's difficult to determine anything at this point. The future is so full of uncertainties.
Our current situation is totally unprecedented in history. In historic times, call for bold and effective leadership. We need to protect the quality of our education instead of simply cutting due to the anticipated budget shortfalls. I support the proposed 2020-2021 budget, which, as I understand it, provides some room for anticipated cuts. New York State limits the amount of revenue every school district may raise through a tax levy, which protects our taxpayers. To the extent the cuts exceed what is currently anticipated by the district, I would tap into the knowledge of our administration and financial advisors to find creative ways to deliver a quality education to our students. I believe this can be accomplished in part through efficient and effective school operations. Everyone in the community benefits from good school district. Local employers benefit from an educated workforce, and good schools provide economic value to the community by attracting new families. In addition to its beauty and close-knit community, Skinny Atlas is known nationwide for having excellent schools. We should continue in this tradition of excellence by pushing through the anticipated troubles ahead.
Question number three, representation. As a school board member, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or as a representative of the school system?
Traditionally, local communities exercise control over public schools by electing representatives to local school boards. In turn, the school board appoints the superintendent of schools, who functions as the chief executive officer of the school district. School principals report directly to the central office and the superintendent. This traditional district organization is criticized for its lack of responsiveness to the desires of parents. As a school board member, I see myself primarily as a representative of the community. School boards are created for the purpose of implementing state legislative policy concerning public schools and locally administering the state system of public education. By state legislative enactment, school boards are delegated power and authority to develop policies, rules, and regulations to control the operation of the schools, including system organization, finance, staffing, curriculum, and other functions essential to the day-to-day operation of schools within the district. As a representative of the community, it is my duty to provide important administrative oversight relative to the educational policies and programs instituted by the board, play a central role in establishing systems and processes to ensure the school system's fiscal, programmatic, and outcome accountability, and undertake broad human resource functions that include making crucial decisions regarding the district's top-level leadership and key staff. It is my belief that school boards provide leadership for the local school system, adopting a unifying vision and mission, soliciting and balancing the participation and input of members of the community, and advocating on behalf of the educational needs of children.
A school board member is an entrusted public official who volunteers to represent the community within the public school setting to advocate for children and ensure accountability of all stakeholders. As a current school board member, I have demonstrated responsiveness to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the Skinny Atlas community. I am always accessible by email and phone, and I always have time to talk when I'm out in the community. If a community member has an issue or a suggestion regarding the district, please keep me informed. With that new knowledge, I can perform my duty as a school board member with improved effectiveness.
In looking at representation, when you look at that, as a school board member, I see myself as primarily a representative of the community with an incredible investment in the school district. If I was lucky enough to be elected, those are the things when we look at this is that looking at as a representative of the community is making sure that I am available to hear community members and what their thoughts and concerns are, the things that are going awesome, all areas of the district. And it helps to have three kids, you know, because I will be in and out of a lot of different places with a lot of different activities. But also being very present in the community also gives me the opportunity to speak with all stakeholders in our community and really making myself available to people and making sure that I'm able to listen and bring that back to my fellow board members as we're moving forward. And also, you know, again, is really, you know, the partnerships that we form and the, with the faculty and making sure that the teachers, everybody feels supportive is a critical part of what I think board represents.
As a board member, I would be the face of Skinny Atlas School District to outside groups, but I would represent the people who elected me, the community.
I don't believe that this is an either-or proposition. I view the school system as a vital part of the community and the school board as a crucial connection between the school system and the community at large. While the school board is elected by the community, its sole focus is to guide and effectively run the school system. Local control of schools is important because the community often knows the best ways to reach their own students as well as what local employers and colleges are looking for. I do not see a conflict between balancing the needs of the school system with the needs of the community because these needs are often one and the same. If they do conflict, school boards can carefully weigh all of the options by listening to all of the stakeholders in the community and then make the hard choices on their behalf.
Question number four, evaluation. How will you, as board members, assess the major strengths and shortcomings of the district and its schools and evaluate their progress? This assessment could cover many topics, from school safety to staff morale, whether families feel welcome and respected, and whether there is widespread understanding and agreement with key priorities for the district, and it would include input from all stakeholders.
A needs assessment is used to understand the strengths and shortcomings of the district. This assessment is also used to identify the goals of the district. Universal screeners, skill assessments, and surveys may also be utilized to gather data about our school and community. To help track progress over the year, a tiered fidelity instrument may be used. School teams can use progress monitoring to demonstrate school improvement to the faculty, administrators, district, parents, community. According to Stephanie Wright, "The development and careful planning of a district-wide framework is the linchpin of a successful and sustainable evidence-based practice." The responsibility lies within the leaders at both the district and school level to develop a clear vision, mission, and common language. This is necessary in order to rally and motivate others in the school district around that common vision with the goal of empowering and building staff expertise through ongoing professional development. Establishing systems and structures such as teacher coaching and support and scheduling regular trainings and feedback groups can help support the long-term sustainability of that initiative. In light of mandated school closures due to the COVID-19 pandemic, finding out more about the social and emotional wellness of our students and staff is vital. There are instruments aimed to measure specific skills, needs, risk factors, competencies, strengths, attitudes, and awareness of our students' social and emotional abilities. This is one initiative I would support as a school board member.
Within the public school settings, standardized tests, quizzes, and skill checks are utilized to formally evaluate competency in particular subjects. From these forms of evaluations, numeric data is collected to assess a school district's academic performance, graduation rates, and to see how school districts compare. As a school board member, I also rely on district-initiated and supported studies to provide valuable insight and data to evaluate the major strengths and shortcomings of the district. Within the last year, a school facility study was completed that analyzed building usage, class sizes, staffing, and the district fiscal health. Through the completion of this study, invaluable information has been obtained and can be utilized to make informed district decisions. Within the next year, a transportation study will be initiated to evaluate the district's transportation programming. In addition, I actively communicate, engage, and make myself accessible with a diverse cross-section of the Skinny Atlas community. As a school board member, listening to all stakeholders allows me to evaluate the level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction. As they say, knowledge is power. Having the knowledge of the needs of all stakeholders allows me to better evaluate how I am performing as a school board member and allows me to evaluate the school priority areas that I need to address with more attention and focus.
The evaluation in terms of evaluating where the district is at, I firmly believe that there should be goals that are established through a clear district strategic plan. And those goals need to be measurable. And when you look at that, luckily, I'm part of, at ESM, we have a strategic plan that is very much a living, live document that then, I'm not saying that we have to do it exactly like that, but I think that that is an area that I think that we can improve in is that if we have a strategic plan that involves all stakeholders and is communicated regularly and put in, put out every year at different times so that the community can see exactly what it is that we're looking to do and where we're at, and really having valid measurable goals will help that out. It helps with building school improvement goals so that things stay aligned and we don't get, you know, off track in different places. When you have a strategic plan that is done well, it keeps things aligned K-12. And then I think that what is so important is that we are getting the feedback from the community. We are in a time now where we can easily get surveys out and get a lot of feedback from, and we need to think of all different avenues and how we can get that feedback from the community, from the faculty, from all of our stakeholders. And then, at the end of the day, we need to collect all of that data and then review our performance. And in looking at that, those goals, if they're established with all the stakeholders, we'll know exactly where we're at and how we need to improve and where we need to.
As a school system, it's our job to develop good citizens. Have we given the students the tools to succeed? How many are prepared for college, entering the workforce, joining the military? These can be measured in our. It's also important though to keep track of our graduates, both to evaluate our effectiveness as a school system. And to maintain a strong sense of, of community. I look forward to, to working with the other board members to develop a more specific rubric that would help. Assess the intangible issues of school safety, staff morale, whether families feel welcome. And respected and so forth. These things can only be assessed with face-to-face communication. I think the best example I have is Dr. Walter Sullivan. Who made it a priority to meet personally with all kinds of people, community groups, faculty and school groups. He approached every issue from multiple angles and made sure the message of the school district was effectively communicated.
Those who know me best know that assessment is something that I love to do. I am constantly valuing my own performance as a professor along with the knowledge and skills that my students demonstrate. As a psychological researcher, I believe in the power of quantitative and qualitative data to gain knowledge and assess outcomes. This extends to assessing the strengths and shortcomings of our district. Data analysis is something between an art and a science, but it cannot be limited just to the data. It comes from the voice of the students, teachers, families and community at large. As a scientist, I value information and truth, even if it can be troubling for some to hear. On a personal note, without critically evaluating myself and my own performance. I would not be able to grow or improve as an instructor. If we do not assess ourselves as a district, we cannot and will not grow to our true potential.
Question number five, transparency. How would you propose publicly sharing these results with community stakeholders? Families, students, graduates, community residents, faculty and staff?
Building strong public transparency should be a key objective of the board. With the advancement of technology, digital tools are now available to school boards that automate and streamline inefficiencies. Involved in board work, which extends to public transparency efforts as well. In keeping with the open meeting laws enforced by states, school boards can leverage paperless meeting software. To provide meeting materials, notices and video streams of meetings in a central online location. Providing this easy intuitive access opens other opportunities to improve public transparency. Initiatives such as leveraging online surveys and evaluations to increase stakeholder input. And using online resources to make meetings and records easily accessible to everyone in the district can improve public transparency. Vibrant community engagement gives school boards needed candid feedback. Often shedding light on alternatives that the board might not have considered previously. Stakeholders' voices should be heard throughout the process of open meetings and decision-making as this prevents distrust. In looking to engage the district more while working within tight schedules and budgets, utilizing the right board management tool is essential. Providing online access has the effect of helping stakeholders feel closer to and more involved in their community. When the stakeholder is kept informed and feels as though they are included and considered in the decisions that are made for the district. A healthy relationship between board members and stakeholders is fostered. Ultimately, boardroom technology can facilitate more open dialogue and make stakeholders feel more comfortable. To attend meetings and speak to board members personally.
In today's school systems, it is more important than ever to establish trust. One of the main components of trust is creating a culture of transparency. Within a school district, being transparent means stakeholders are aware of issues, decisions and the educational direction of the district. No Board of Education can have complete transparency due to school-related issues that cannot be shared publicly. As a board member, I will share to the maximum extent that the law allows. Issues that cannot be shared publicly are personnel issues, student privacy issues, security concerns and medical situations. These issues must remain confidential by law and failure to maintain confidentiality could result in serious legal ramifications. As an educational leader in a public school, I can be a model in setting the bar for school district transparency. I can keep families, students, graduates, community residents, faculty and staff informed on public issues and public evaluation findings. I can make myself available to explain the rationale behind public issue decisions. I am easily accessible by phone, email and at board meetings. I am an approachable individual and please feel free always to reach out. I feel that when the Skinny Alice community understands the facts and factors that were considered to make an informed board decision. Mistrust amongst the stakeholders should be lessened.
Transparency. There are so many avenues for communication now, and I think it's really important that um, as a district, the superintendent. Um, when we're looking at, at everything that we are making sure that we're communicating. Over-communicating is with the community, the faculty, with all stakeholders. Um, I, I think that the community, um, parents, students, faculty, everyone, there is so much going on. I think that one of the things we, looking at uh, technology is really looking to see if we can. Um, have live um, streaming of our board meetings so that. Uh, people can, if it's a last second thing, and they can't make it to the Board of Education meeting, they can watch it in the comfort of their home, own home. And you know, I think looking at superintendent updates should be frequent and you know, communicating about all areas of the district and. You know, um, also reporting out on the important aspects of what you're doing. I think that it's really critical that our Board of Education meeting agenda and minutes um, always should be really up to date and um, easy to find on, on the website. Um, all part of uh, the transparency.
I think transparency is a complex issue. A board action may involve the medical needs of a student or individual. It could involve personnel matters. I think it's important to act appropriately and balance full transparency with privacy rights.
I believe that transparency is critically important because of the trust that community members place in their school districts. Not only are you trusting us with your tax dollars, you are also entrusting us to oversee the education of children. Our most precious resource and future citizens. Without transparency, people have a harder time seeing the value of their investments in public education. And we need community support to make our school system successful. It is critically important that information be shared widely in an easily accessible way. This does not simply have to be dry facts and figures, even though those may appeal to some data-minded folks like me. Oftentimes, a personal story about how a student's life has been changed by a particular programmer or teacher. Can better underscore the value that our school systems provide. We have a strong educational foundation and parent-teacher committees, which provide substantial support for the district. And I recognize their efforts at community involvement. I believe we can expand this by providing more information on our website. Feature teachers or programs in the district and improve our list of residents so that we can send. Important and timely messages to our community before they are broadcasted to Syracuse as a whole. Residents have the right to understand how our schools are functioning, whether they have children in them or not. And I believe the school board has a duty to help them understand this.
I decided to run for the school board to be an anchor for children's education. An anchor keeps a boat in place. Connected by a rope, the boat is allowed to drift only so far in any direction around its center. We, the community, are the emotional center for children's education. We are their secure base, solid and reliable, firm and constant, stable and secure. We support teachers and parents in the education of our children. Our ability to anchor children emotionally today will allow them to feel safe and confident tomorrow. According to the New York State United Teachers President, Andrew Pallotta. If we want to reimagine education, let's start with addressing the need for social workers, mental health counselors, school nurses. Enriching art courses, advanced courses in smaller class sizes in school districts across the state. Let's recognize educators as the experts they are. As a parent and educator and a healthcare provider, I find myself uniquely qualified to face the challenges of educating in the COVID-19 era. My work is patient care, which means strategizing, figuring out complex health dilemmas and most importantly, serving others. Making the right decisions happens when you listen to the voices of parents, teachers and community members. Serving on the Skinny Alice Elementary Parent-Teacher Committee for the past four years has taught me this vital lesson. If elected, I will utilize my healthcare grant writing and teaching experience to focus on instructional technology. Curriculum development, improving the health, safety and wellness of students. And procurement of art and educational grants to benefit academic enrichment opportunities for the district. My broad experience will allow me to continue to advance excellence in education for all Skinny Alice students and best serve our community. I'm asking that you please vote for me, Michelle Etter, for the Skinny Alice School Board of Education on June 9th. Thank you for your consideration.
With my extensive experience in the field of education and my dedication to the Skinny Alice community, I'm the strongest, most experienced candidate for the Skinny Alice Board of Education. I am running for the Skinny Alice Board of Education so that I can continue to serve my community as a school board member. To advocate for all children within the district and to support the Skinny Alice School District's strategic plan. Having grown up in Skinny Alice and now being a parent raising a family in the community, I'm very aware of the needs of the district. And I want to use my extensive experience and knowledge to help. I have developed strong connections with district families and residents. As an educational professional, I have 23 years of experience of school, as a school administrator, teacher and coach. For my service in the public school setting, I have gained valuable skills that can be utilized on the Board of Education areas of budget development. Experience on remote learning instruction, knowledge of public school education, regulations. Assessment of school safety plans, experience with administrative support for school personnel, management of multimillion-dollar school construction projects. And utilization of effective communication techniques to connect with district students, parents, personnel and community members.
Listening. I want to thank you for taking the time to watching all the presentations and I'm sure they proved to be very helpful. I also want to once again thank the Skinny Alice Education Foundation and PTC for putting this together. I wish the best of luck to Dan, Ezra, Michelle and Val. Uh, I think it says a lot that all of us are running. It shows um, how much we value uh, Skinny Alice Central Schools. I hope you all are, are staying healthy. Um, and once again, if I'm elected, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, I want you to know that I will put all my effort. Uh, to making sure that we continue to move the district forward. Once again, thank you for your time.
As I've said before, I've always been proud of the school district, faculty and staff, the administration and the community support and involvement. I've volunteered in many capacities during the past years and would like to stay involved. In support of the higher education in this town. I have the experience and dedication necessary to make a positive contribution. Thank you.
Thank you to the Education Foundation and the PTC for putting this together and thank you especially for tuning in. I am deeply humbled and honored to be running for school board and asking for your vote. I take voting and public service extremely seriously. And I want to contribute my time, talents and expertise to help our school system grow and improve. I'm very open to hearing from community members. As a professor, I love to learn new things and hear different and diverse viewpoints. I welcome the rewards and challenges that come with public service and I cannot think of a better place to help than our school system. Please fill in the bubble to the right of my name so I can take this next step and contribute to the community. Thank you.
This concludes our 2020 school board candidate presentation. On behalf of the PTC and Julia Wamp, SEF and myself, we thank you for joining us and thank you for voting.